I guess we do the, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll do it backwards, call the roll, please.
Palomsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Estito. Absent, Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Beremis.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum, and we'll move on to the review of the fiscal year 2023 budget before we get to circle back, is there anything you want to say in advance of that city manager?
Certainly, just so everybody knows, Finance Director Coyle is ill today, which is why she's not here with us, but otherwise, we are here and ready to answer any questions that you may have on the circle back items. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the circle back for the, I think everyone's done this once before, but what we'll do is, we have the circle back memo that was item three B on your agenda, and we'll kind of go through, then I will call out each item, and the alderman who asked for the circle back, and the question will then be, are you satisfied with the information provided, or do you want to, do you have additional questions, or want additional discussion? So let's proceed that way, and we'll start with item one, what is the appropriate number of firefighters to have given the city's population, Alderman Hanquist?
Yes, Mayor, so I get to address this?
Would you like to?
I would.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. So I was a little disappointed with this, because what I was looking for, if it exists, is there a ratio that either the state, the county, the National Association of Firefighters, whomever, comes out and says, for the number of people or structures in a community, what's the ratio of firefighters to that number of units or persons? So I understand we're going to be going through this study, and that study may answer some of that, that's okay, I was just hoping to maybe address it here as part of the budget process versus addressing it separately through committee meetings, because obviously, I'm not on that committee. Having stated that, you look like you're ready to say something, so I'll be quiet for a minute.
I am ready to say something.
Okay.
Thank you. So there are standards that the NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency puts forth, and there's a lot of factors that play into that. That's exactly what the study touched, well, the study touches on that, obviously, then you want to nuance that to what is good for Elmhurst. So I can't give you that number here, because there are so many factors into that, and it also takes into account overlap and mutual aid and those type of things.
that would, okay, here's another question then, I guess. Does that, that factors in number of people, units, does it factor in then the number of structural fires? Or what criteria does it then kind of cross-reference? I'm looking at kind of my chart, does it go that far? Or is that not considered?
If it's okay, I'd ask Chief Anna Shevitz to come up and kind of get into that part of it, he's more familiar with NFPA standards than I am.
So there's different recommendations for residential and commercial structure fires. There is an old chart that states that for every 100,000 people, I'm sorry, for every 10,000 people in a municipality, you have one firefighter, it's 100,000, I apologize. So that would say around 48 for us, through NFPA recommendations, overall, right? There is also recommendations for commercial property, high-rise, and then residential firefighting, and it breaks it down for engine companies, but they look at average response times, they look at command positions, engine operations, truck operations, so as the manager said, in the staffing study, they broke it down for residential and commercial occupancies, and then said an average of what they recommend, which is well-known, 1710 is a well-known recommendation that's followed throughout the fire service.
It's one firefighter per 1,000, I think is, not per.
1,000, yes.
Otherwise, we're way over.
Yeah, sorry.
My first question. I was like, one for every 100,000.
He's a part-time guy, and we're done.
It's the mayor in his off hour. Okay, thank you for that. My, I guess, it sounds like the report, is it already done?
No, it is incomplete, and there's still work to be done, we had discussed with the consultant, some of the areas that were missed, and what we're still looking to collect information on, so it's not.
Okay, so it's in process?
It is.
Okay, all right, that's great, so I'll wait for that. The only statement I wanted to make in general, and it's in the budget area, of the things I've learned in the time I've been here, and I don't know exactly what's going to come out of this study, but the one area that we seem to have changed the most in the decades of government is fire, and it seems to me that, in a good way, through fire prevention, through building code, through education, we have significantly reduced fires, obviously, and people don't smoke like they used to, you know, my family, everybody was throwing a cigarette somewhere, you know, 50 years ago. But, you know, that has seemed to be a monster kind of shift in what's gone on in our society, and when I look at the numbers, at the, you know, that are published here, I see very few fires. And so my concern is, there may be great information out there on what has historically been in play, and I'm hoping that we are at a place where maybe we can take a fresh look at things, understanding that what happened 20, 30, 50 years ago, I think tonight was the anniversary of the Boston fire that changed the code for the entire country, and so that was 80 years ago. And so I'm just hoping as we go through this process, that, you know, every time I have this conversation, it's like, well, you know, you go to Springfield, and they got this, and they got this, and they got that, I'm like, I understand that, and there was a good reason for fire to develop the way it did, and for firefighters to, and I'm not up here saying, oh, we don't need a fire department. But I do think we have to think about it differently than we've think about other things in the municipal world over the years, and this is one of those areas that, to me, I just, as I've learned in this job, this is one of those areas, I think, there's been a fundamental shift in what was required 30, 40 years ago, maybe, to where we are today, given building code updates and everything else I just said, so I look forward to that, happy to talk to you offline, but it would be nice if, we like to have pride that we sometimes are the first, or we're kind of out with some of the first at looking at some of these things, and I'd hope that as we get this back, it's not just a report that says, well, this is what the NFL.
NFPA.
NFP?
NFPA.
NFPA says, we're done.
Yeah, and NFPA is a recommendation, and what we try to focus on is the response time, so we're under acceptable response time to keep our ratings and the community safe, so that is what we use mostly to address staffing and have the appropriate staffing, so the amount of fires are down, but calls for service, whether they be any type of call, is what keeps increasing, so it could be EMS, it could be a car accident, it could be several different types, and that's, there's a chart of what we responded to.
And that, I completely agree with, and that's why I'm kind of jumping out of my seat right now, there, and now there's other ways to handle those calls than running a truck.
Correct.
I know we have other things like, well, let's see, you know, how do we take a look at our trucks? There are other ways, as we know, and we've done in this town, to address, coming off the stats, 95-plus percent of what we're doing, it's a difference, this is not the same as it's always been.
Right.
So I understand the, I understand, I can almost read the report, and it's going to tell me exactly kind of what we know, and that, you know, maybe I'm wrong, and I hope I'm wrong, but I hope we can take a fresh lens on it and say, okay, well, that's, that is required, can we do it a different way? And does that change what we need going forward? And does that change the cost structure of what we need going forward? And that's why I wanted to be part of the budget discussion, I've said it, we'll see where it goes, but that's why I want to address it tonight, so thanks.
Thank you.
And I look forward to the report.
Since you're all warmed up, Alderman Hanquist, number two is the number of communities that do not meet their pension obligations. Alderman Hanquist.
Was that mine, too?
Yes.
I think it was, in the line of thinking I was going under. I did read this, I understand, the most interesting part of it was the state stepping in to fund unfunded communities, I don't have any other specific questions to it, though, it was satisfactory to my question.
Why don't, the state doesn't step in, if you don't fund it, they will take your money and fund it.
Well, sorry, correction, but my point was, the state will get involved to help fund the.
Yeah, they will take your local money.
And it may bankrupt the town, but it will get funded.
Okay. Number three, are we good on two?
We're good on two.
Thank you. Number three, analysis of the cost savings of adding the rescue squad to the fleet, Alderman Toledo.
Is that mine, or Alderman Brennan's?
Mine's the next one.
Okay. I would like to address a couple of questions to that, then, Mayor.
All right.
Jim, can you give the overview of the P A and S?
Yeah, I think, I think for these next two questions, because P A and S has been, when I've been involved in these discussions personally, I was spending a lot of time looking at what was presented, so I think the overview would be helpful, then I'll turn it back to you.
Okay.
Alderman, Deuter.
So folks, remember, this was one we came up, that came up, I think Chief Anna Shevitz talked about the concept of this, and we brought the concept back to P A and S to talk about generally, and the idea, the budget this year includes, I think it's about $380,000 for the purchase of a rescue squad, and the concept is that that rescue squad would run in place of the ladder truck, I believe, right? So the two firefighters who normally go out on calls on the ladder truck would move to the rescue squad if it's a call that does not explicitly require the use of the ladder truck. I think the primary motivator of this was to extend the life of the ladder truck, I think the way we're running it now, it's been incurring pretty high maintenance costs and repair costs, such that instead of getting the 20 years that we'd like to get out of a truck of that size and expense, we're running it in a way that would give us only about 12 years, we'd have to look at replacing it, and the concept that staff laid out is that by running the smaller vehicle that can serve all the same functions except for the tower operating, but can respond to all the same types of accidents and other types of emergencies, that the smaller truck would have less maintenance, would be less expensive to operate, lower gas costs, that would just, that if we did it that way, if it worked as expected, instead of replacing that truck in 12 years, as it's looking now, 20 years as we would have hoped to get, it could go as far as 30 years out, that we could be operating with the same ladder truck. So the conversation we had was a preliminary one, again, just looking at the concept, if this is something that staff decides, if it stays in the budget, and it's something that staff decides to move forward on, then it would come back for an actual decision about whether or not this is a piece of equipment to purchase, and in just on, in terms of cost, I think it's about 380 that's in the budget, the actual cost would be closer to $220,000 without a pump, and additional about 40,000 if we decide to put a pump on that truck, so much less expensive than staff's first estimate of the truck. So for those reasons, the consensus of the committee was that we supported that concept, knowing that we'd have one more crack at the details of what that truck would, you know, what the capacity of it is, do we get it with a pump, without a pump, but the concept made a lot of sense to the committee when we looked at it.
Just to clarify, the staff won't make the decision if it stays in the budget, we will, but before the expenditure is made, it would be coming back to the council. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, thanks for that explanation, I, you know, certainly as normal, would trust the committee process, and, you know, I'm not going to ask to move this out, but as the committee considers this, when we get to that stage, I think there's a couple of assumptions in the circle back analysis that was presented that is a bit of a stretch from an assumption basis, and primarily, what that is, is the extended useful life. I have been on this council for long enough to know that there is no way that the city of Elmhurst is going to have a vehicle that is 30 years old. That assumption is not true, and so when you do the cost estimate, and you take, you know, $100,000 for 18 years, it makes it look very rosy, like the cost benefit makes sense, I would just challenge the committee and staff, when we get to that point of looking at those details, we have to challenge the assumptions, and there's just, there's no way anyone on a city council 20 years from now is going to let a fire truck be 30 years old. That's, that's one primary concern that I had when I just reviewed some of the information on the circle back items. You know, the concept makes sense. The flip side of that is, I think there's several of us on the council that already feel that the city of Elmhurst has too much fire equipment, so while I appreciate the desire to want to, like, save money, buying more equipment might not be the right way. Maybe we get rid of that ladder truck, because that one fire that we have that requires a ladder truck, we get from a mutual aid, maybe replace that ladder truck with the rescue squad, maybe we need to look at it in a different way. I'm happy to let the process play out, but I would say that there are a couple of assumptions that we want to make sure that we challenge during the committee process, and as staff brings that back. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Toledo, and we'll move on to.
Alderman Palmsky has a question.
Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor, I would like to, I had some of the same questions, well, I appreciate the feedback and the committee review of this, I am curious to know if in the review of a, you know, looking at this with the idea that it would be saving money over time, you know, if, I would like to ask if the committee, if you weren't already, could also take a look at the other municipalities that are nearby that have access to this equipment, how often it's used, and I'm also wondering, at what point does, you know, less utilization of one type of truck mean that you're saving money on it, or do you reach the threshold of determining that we don't need it? So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, and I just want to assure the entire council that we are looking at a lot of things in the fire department, so I appreciate that you're willing to let it play out, we're not spending the money, but the concept seems to make sense, if it doesn't play out, well, then we won't do it, but Alderman Dunn, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure what this vehicle looks like, but I assume it's smaller, and I'm wondering, and it's a little bit of a tie-in to what Alderman Hanquist was discussing, is there a manning savings to having this smaller equipment versus the larger ladder truck, you might need less people on it to go to a call, so just an issue that I think that deserves a look as well.
Do you want to answer that, or do you want that in consideration?
I think the committee will, when they review it, just look at that factor also.
Anyone else on this one? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll just respond to a couple of things that came up that did, that was discussed in the committee, again, in this preliminary overview of the concept, there are many, at least a handful of departments around us that are moving to this concept of running a rescue squad, I know the chief mentioned Arlington Heights, Naperville, and Elk Grove Village were the three that I jotted down, I think there were a few others, so this is something that other departments are finding makes more sense. One of the things we talked about, Alderman Toledo, to your point of, you know, do we need to replace that truck eventually? You know, I think we would be running, if we did this, we would be running this rescue squad as a test, it gives us an opportunity to really see, okay, how often do we use the truck, the ladder truck, as opposed to the rescue squad? If it's working really well, maybe we would do this at the other station, and then maybe we only need one ladder tower, right? That was part of the conversation that we had at committee of, how does this evolve, how we provide in terms of service? And then for the manning piece, the engines run with three firefighters currently, the trucks run with two firefighters, so those two firefighters would be the two that move to the rescue squad, so it would not, wouldn't be less than what it is now, but it would be that same two moving from one truck to the other.
All right, thank you, Alderman Deuter, anything else on three? On item four, data on the annual maintenance costs of large fire trucks, which ties in. Alderman Brennan, you said that was yours?
Yes.
I believe you.
Thank you, Mayor, so thank you very much for providing the details, as I expected, I mean, you know, the run rate, you know, cost run rate for, you know, maintenance on these bigger vehicles is roughly 200K a year, and so that's certainly a sizable amount of money. I trust the process, so I appreciate the discussions that are happening at committee, I do think it's a great opportunity for us to reimagine, you know, how we service our community, you know, in different ways, based on the types of calls that we're getting, and, you know, just one follow-up question to the, I think it's referred to as a smaller rescue pumper, size-wise, how does that compare to the seven apparatuses that are outlined in attachment B?
So, do you have the one with the PW-77 on there at the last line? In the, it's in the attachment?
PW-77.
And I had fleet run a comparison.
Do you have a page number on there, on the computer, Jim?
It would be page eight, attachment B.
Page eight in the PDFs, yeah.
The vehicle that chief is referring to is not on here, that's a comparison that he did with a public works truck, which he's going to explain right now.
Yeah, so a F-550 chassis with the work cabinet utility, like a utility vehicle is what we used to compare this on, so fleet supervisor, Butch Wanderer ran the vehicle, and the comparison for annual fuel and repair costs for a year, the average for 2020 to 2022 is $5.88 per mile for service and fuel on average. I can get this information out as part of the response to you, but there was a comparison done, so if you were to look at it, it's a Ford F-550 chassis, and then depending on what we go with, whether it's a pump or strictly utility, like a rescue squad, that would determine the size of the box that placed on top of the chassis.
I see, so it's considerably smaller than the pumpers, right?
It'd be similar like a pickup truck without the bed, but just a box on the back.
And for me, that totally makes sense, I, you know, see, you know, the ladder truck and other engines, you know, accompanying, you know, medic one or medic two, or the rescue, and they're huge, I mean, their footprint is just massive in our community, so I'm all for downsizing to a vehicle that is more nimble and more appropriate to actually navigate the streets for these calls. That said, I do agree with much of the discussion that has occurred here, I think it's just too big of an opportunity to not reimagine how we service our community and really be progressive and lead, you know, in this particular area, and that imagination definitely has my support. Thank you for the information.
Welcome.
Anything else on item four? We'll move to item five, historical data on fire calls, Alderman Hanquist.
I've got the data, I'm fine with that.
Very good. Item six, information on the occurrence of fires for electric versus regular gas vehicles, Alderman Mulliner.
I'm fine with what I got.
Thank you. Item seven, municipal center parking lot and municipal property analysis, Alderman Dunn.
Sorry.
The attachment E.
What number are we on?
Number seven, the attachment E is the response.
All right. Sorry, I didn't realize I had that one there. I think I'm okay with what was presented, so we can move on.
Okay. You want me to come back, or you're good?
I'm okay.
Okay. Item eight, provide the 2018 police facility study and any report from former Alderman Kennedy. It was Alderman Hill. Actually, go ahead, Alderman Hill, do you have other?
Thank you, Mayor, I think one of the things I was asking for, I do appreciate the study that was presented, the March 8th facility study, in the minutes that are presented there on page 65, attachment F.
Yeah.
Item 4.1 talks about, Alderman Kennedy had requested a report needs to be developed on what functions need to remain within the police department, and what functions could be off-site, and then Alderman Dunn asked a follow-up question, which is on the next page, that was answered, but I think I was looking for that report as well, that Alderman Kennedy had requested, and I tried to search back a little bit, I didn't do an exhaustive search, but I didn't see where that had been compiled, or maybe it hadn't been, but I just wanted to ask for that.
It had not been compiled, there was some talk of that, of what functions could be, and I think we committed that we would look at that further, we did not compile the report, and then, of course, it got backburnered after that.
Okay, if it doesn't exist, then that's all I can ask, thank you.
All right, and as you know, this is one area we'll be investigating further, one for police, one for fire. Other questions on item eight? Item nine is yours as well, Alderman Hill?
Alderman Toledo.
Yeah, just back on that police facility, I actually think that that list is a good list to inform the committee when they get to talking about building a new police station, or whatever we're going to be doing, so I would encourage staff and the committee to reengage on ex-Alderman Kennedy's original request for what could be, because, you know, I think, just like we're reimagining the fire, we're talking about a lot of money if we're, which is in the capital budget for rebuilding or building a new police station, and if there are functions like record retention that don't have to be housed in the same building, and could be housed in a city hall building, for example, that would inform the architect and the design of a future building, so I think that that assessment by the police department, leading up to an input to the committee process, would be a wonderful thing to do, and do in a time where chief and his team have time to do it, and not under the gun for some next committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo, anyone else? All right, item nine, provide the average age of police buildings in DuPage County, Alderman Hill?
I don't know if I asked that question, I think it was addressed in the report, actually, as the average age, I think Alderman Dunn asked it back in 2018, though, I can see it on the report, but anyway, that's been provided, so I'm certainly happy with it.
Is there anyone else that had a question on attachment G, whoever asked it? All right. Item 10, staff suggestions on funding sidewalks in the north area of Elmhurst, I don't even have to look at the list, Alderman Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor, so this is a list of ways we could raise revenue, which, you know, I understand all the ways we can raise revenue, I was looking more for, and maybe I wasn't clear, you know, is there stuff in the budget that is of lower priority possibly than a public safety-type expenditure that could be deferred, or can we find funding in other ways? You know, we have a lot of stuff in there, for example, a police station that has 1.5 million geo-bonds this year, which I support, obviously, the police station project, I don't know if we're ready to spend that this year, that could be a potential funding source, I'm just looking for, I was looking for different ways that we could tweak the budget and find some potential funding in case the public works committee comes up with a plan for some potential funding in case the Public Works Committee comes up with a plan for addressing some public safety issues where there's lack of sidewalks.
Alderman Palmski?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to add to that, too, please. So I agree with Alderman Jensen. I think we are thinking, in light of this being what could be regarded as classification 4C, like if we look at other projects that are also with that same priority and class, is there a way to stagger the planning for that? You know, how could we look at that? And again, we're not looking at all sidewalks in North Elmhurst. It's really some priority sidewalks, probably north-south, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be potentially funded by TIF, and that's about $700,000?
I've heard that number. I have a...
Thank you.
So, of course, the Public Works Committee is going through the discussion of that sidewalk issue. And if the direction of the council is for us to find that money in the proposed budget, certainly we'll do that. So I guess I await that direction tonight, perhaps, or even into the future as we go through the budget process.
All right. Anyone else on item 10? Item 11, breakdown of costs for the wellness room and general neutral restroom. Alderman Toledo or Dunn, or both? You can't remember who asked?
Mayor, maybe I could start with some comments. So as we looked further into this item, we have the PPACA, the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act, citing in here, which is for the wellness room. We believe that we have enough space in City Hall with Metropolitan Family Services leaving that we can probably work that into the wellness room. And then we're further looking into the restroom issue. And perhaps because we don't have single-stall restrooms, we may not be, we may not have to do that. We may not have to work that project in. So this is, these are two projects and a dollar amount that may come way down as we further look into that.
I think there was also some discussions. We talk about, there have been discussions, I think, with all the Aldermen about the futures of City Hall, the police station, and, you know, what we do. So they may be in the budget, but not necessarily spent this year or even next as we continue those discussions. All right, anything else on 11?
Yeah.
All right, item 12. Well, what are the federal requirements for the wellness room and general neutral restroom? Those were attached. Does anyone have questions on those? All right, item 13, list of the City Hall improvements in the 2023 budget. Alderman Dunn, I think that was yours.
Yes, thank you. So we've touched on some of this, and the intent here was, as was mentioned, alluded to earlier in the conversation tonight, there is interest in possibly a new police station, potentially having City Hall co-located there. That is a strong concept that we've been discussing, and my feeling was we probably shouldn't be spending too much long-term capital improvement in either facility or related to either facility until we really get an answer on which way we're going with that. So that's why I pulled these City Hall improvements. And we talked about the wellness and gender-neutral restroom. The DIES improvement was rolled over from this year's budget. I think that was about $50,000, is what I was told. You know, those are items that I think should be deferred and, you know, not spent in 2023 or, you know, actually pushed out to 2024. I'm of the understanding that the carpeting is in pretty bad shape, that if we're probably not going to relocate City Hall for several years, so that's something that needs to be done in the interim. And the server network, the air conditioner there is a high priority, so that one probably should stay in from what I understand. So my, you know, my position on this is that the C and D should be not spent in 2023 in light of the study that's being done. There is, we discussed the police station study that was done a couple of years ago. The concept of that, and I don't know if the Aldermen had a chance to read that, it's a rather lengthy report, but was restructuring the existing police station where it is now or potentially building a new one even somewhere else. And the first option was, at that time, 20 million or so, and the second option was $30 million. Their city hall is in better shape and, you know, may not need to move, but there is discussion on that. And there is a study being done right now. I was informed by the city manager to look at the feasibility of that, what a joint facility might look like, potentially at the current police station. And so be anxious to see the result of that report, which I understand is going to be coming out in one to two months, perhaps?
Yes, that's explained.
So I am good with this, and there, you know, as far as these City Hall improvements,
All right. Other discussion on this item? And just to be clear, there's no decisions being made on City Hall or the police department? Also, the carpeting that we're looking at doing is just the hallways, because those are a little bit hazardous in City Hall. Item 14, Alderman Jensen, does this discussion answer your question? I think it was yours.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Thanks.
Okay. Item 15, breakdown on revenue and expenses for city rental properties. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to staff for pulling this information together. They did. I'm going to get to that attachment. I did just have a couple of clarifying questions. 180 Park, I assume there is no debt service to be paid on that building? Is that correct?
That's correct. Very right. That's correct.
And then the expenses that were shown for, well, staying with 180 Park, looks like typically that's about a break-even. But I was surprised that the expenses are as high as they are. Can you, do you have any more detail on what is included in those expenses?
You have a breakdown there, right?
I don't have the detail here, but we can provide them.
Or generally speaking, I mean, I know we pay a property management company to do that. I don't know if there are bonuses that get paid out with new tenants come in. I'm just, again, surprised by the high cost, and I don't need a breakdown necessarily, but just maybe a little more flavor if you have it on...
Sure. So there are expenses to leasing it and managing the property, typical operational expenses. And then we do try to keep it up to date so that we can get the most amount out of our rent or leases. So occasionally, we will have to improve an office space or a restroom, things like that, that are pretty typical. That's where you see some of the spikes in here is when we had to make a major improvement, maybe for a whole floor or at least, I know a couple of restrooms had to be upgraded for ADA purposes.
Okay. Good to know. And then on the other table, which was for 113 to 121 Addison, I, these numbers probably don't include debt service. We do have debt from this purchase, correct?
Correct. We do have debt services not included.
And the expense not included.
Correct.
And we did some improvements to the property, also not reflected in these numbers, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
When we first purchased the property, we had to make some improvements to that, right?
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, the annual expenses do not include debt service?
Not in these.
Not in this table. Correct.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Deuter, or anyone else on this line? I think it would be helpful, at least I would like, not to hold up the budget, but I would like to see what the expenses are on 180 Park, because they do seem significant.
We can get those out.
All right. Item 14, information, oops, I think we did that already. Back to item 16. Information on the last time a project was, a sidewalk, a sidewalk project was completed from account 110648S, 513, rather, 8034. Alderman Hill, was that your question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, gives me a good snapshot of when those funds, which I believe 50,000 are allocated annually for that sidewalk improvement fund. Am I correct, city manager?
I'm sorry, Alderman, how much did you ask?
Is it 50,000, I think, is allocated for that?
Correct. That's been our plug number for the last couple of years.
Okay. And to that effect, I just, I guess, like to make a comment that when we look at options for funding for third ward sidewalks or second ward sidewalks, and we have that line that goes unfulfilled for, you know, 12 years, I would think that might point to perhaps some barrier that the city's process might be responsible for to some degree in getting new sidewalks installed if the SSA process is simply failing to complete sidewalks around the city. So I hope we can, I guess if we were to revise that policy, it would go to Public Works, I suppose. So maybe that's something we can take a look at.
I think, Alderman Brennan?
Yeah, so the policy was referred to Public Works. So that is, you know, it's a pretty big topic, actually. We've had numerous meetings on it, and we will submit a report at some point in the near future, but it's already before committee.
All right. Anything else on item 16? Item 17, explanation of salary increases in the parking fund. Alderman Palmski, I think that was yours?
Yes.
Do you have any?
I guess I don't have questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on 17? Item 18, timing of the parking levy as compared to debt service payments. That was yours, Alderman Toledo?
Yeah, I've been looking at that. So I get it. The, I get the, 2013 issue was when we had the different calendar year. What I was trying to wrap my head around is we, basically what I think that the attachments that you shared is that we collected, we owe a payment of $603,000 on March 1st of 2023, but we collected it in the 2021 levy, which was paid in 2022. Did I get that right?
I believe so, yes.
And we didn't really collect it because we abated it, but the monies, so I guess that final statement then, since we did abate it and we didn't collect it, is it coming out of the 2022 budget? You know, where we're paying out of all of the various places that we used to fund the abated general obligation bonds? Or is it going to come out of the 2023 budget?
The debt service expenditure?
That's $603,000.
2020.
It would be coming out of 2023, whatever we have.
Okay. And we, and that again gets back to, we talked about that at committee, and we were trying to figure out, making sure that it wasn't found money, basically, like an extra $600,000 that we had in the budget that we actually didn't have to pay for. But this proves that we have to make the debt, the principal and interest payment in 2023, and we've budgeted for that. So the only discrepancy then is that fiscal year that was confusing about...
Shifted it?
The shift. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on item 18? Item 19, Schiller parking deck screening.
Alderman Dunn? Yeah. This is a 400, proposed $400,000 capital expense to install screening next to the police station. And since it's related to the police station and we are studying what we're going to do with that station, it would be best to not make this expenditure until we have full clarity on the, what we're doing with the new building, whether it's staying there or potentially moving somewhere else. So I believe that we need to delay this expenditure until we have a decision made regarding what we're going to do with the police station. So as far as leaving it in the budget, we can leave it in there. But I would, you know, want to make note that this should be contingent on a outcome of the study indicating that we do want to remain in that same location.
Alderman Mulliner?
I agree that we need to kind of pay attention to what's going on with the police station, but at the same time, this is a situation where I don't believe we're going to have a new police station in a couple of years. I think that this is something that we do need to look at and to address to keep our police officers safe as they're crossing from one building to another. So I think this is something that, as they move forward, if they see a need for it, I think we should continue to have it in the budget, and I think we should move it forward if the police department sees a need for it.
All right, so staying in the budget, and there can always be future discussion on it. Anyone else on item 19? Item 20, ridership data on the trolley. Alderman Hill, I think that was yours?
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment here is, is this as far back as we collected it? Or is there any finer sort of view of this data, whether it's looking at? Okay.
That's the data we have.
Okay.
I think it's proven a little tricky to get the driver to collect that data consistently with everything else that we have the driver doing, and so we're looking at a new system to make that more efficient.
Then I'm fine. Thank you.
Right, I see there's an add-on for drawdowns on the line of credit that City Treasurer asked about.
Mayor, if I may, this is like a half-baked circle back. The draws are kind of nothing without the rates, so perhaps some additional context that we'll hope, if anyone else was looking at this. And Director Quill did mention that the SOFR rate, what was increasing, but I guess that didn't hit me, how much it has changed since the end of last year. So some context on this, the line of credit interest rate is the SOFR, 30-day SOFR rate plus 0.72%. And if you're looking at some of the historical data here, 2021, at 12/31/21, the SOFR rate was 0.05%. Today, the SOFR rate, 30-day SOFR rate is at 3.67%. So this truly is just a crazy rate increase that we're going through right now, and that number might even be too low at this point. So I'm okay once doing some additional research that this is really rate-driven. Thank you.
Thank you, City Treasurer. Alderman Jensen?
Anyone want to follow up on that? Is, or should the interest on the line of credit be attributed to the TIF that's currently holding the, you know, or holding the debt against that balance, I guess? I'm not saying it properly, but, for example, TIF 4, at the end of this year, has like a $1.4 million balance. TIF 5 is nearly three. TIF 6 is nearly four, or over four. And unless I'm misreading this, the line of share of interest for 2023, where it doesn't look like there's any new draws in TIF 4, is being attributed to TIF 4 rather than TIF 5 and TIF 6. Is that, can you sort of, you know, assign the interest wherever you need to? Or is it something where, you know, should it be attributed to the TIF that actually is, again, has the debt outstanding?
At least based on the draws and the balance.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask Ryan to touch on it.
So, yeah, it is attributed to the current principal...
So, yeah, it is attributed to the current principal balance, so there's some variation, the timing of, like, when the draw is, when the payments are happening, and as treasurer mentioned, like, the rate fluctuations, because the SOFR rate is a variable rate. So while we tried to reflect in the budget that the balances, but there are going to be some fluctuations based on those factors.
But so, in the end, it will be attributed to the TIF that was, like, the average balance of the TIF throughout the year, sort of thing?
So whenever we make those payments, we're allocating it based on the balance in those, from those particular TIFs at the time we're making that interest payment.
Cool, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Other questions on 21? All right. From my list, city manager, that's the last of the circle backs, correct? Were there any add-ons? All right. So let's talk about where we go from here, because I would assume that the budget would then be...
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The budget would then be on the next city council meeting?
Correct. That's our plan, is to have it on the December 5th council meeting.
OK. And if that's the only business we have on the agenda, is there anything else anyone wants to bring up before we adjourn? Alderman Palomsky?
I have a question yet. So just following up on some of the comments that were made tonight, for example, Alderman Dunn mentioned, well, you know, maybe we don't fund this now. Is that something, you know, in years past, we have seen motions where there was some adjustments, but if we're having it fully on our budget, would we expect this to look like it does right now, or will we see anything reflected, some of the comments?
I think what we've got going is that these items are staying in the budget, for instance, the screening on the deck or the, you know, some of the improvements that we talked about until we see, which we hope isn't going to be next year, but, you know, within the next four to six months of where we're going. If we don't spend it, it stays in the general balance. It doesn't get spent. And if we decide we're going to build a new facility, then those funds might be available for that facility in Part II, but in part also not Part II. So, you know, we've got, the levy has been passed. This would be the budget, but again, I know that sometimes we get into a trick bag. Someone says, well, it's in the budget, so we can spend it. And then people say, well, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we're going to spend it. I can assure you that the improvements and the expenditures that have been discussed tonight with respect to fire, police, City Hall are not going to be spent until we, as a council, look at it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your attention. We could stay till 10, but I don't see a reason to do that. So if you have a motion to adjourn, Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Hill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.